Hi guys, here is Pete Sessions, he is our local congressman and he is here to talk to us. And we are here to ask him, we can ask him some questions. So, yeah, this is gonna be pretty cool.
We're gonna set the ground rules here real fast if we can.
Okay, so Mr. Sessions is gonna speak about his background and his platform for about 10 to 15 minutes. So that way we can have maximum amount of time for you guys to be able to get as many questions as possible answered, okay? So as we're, as, you know, each group should ask one question at a time. You know, I'm gonna, you guys are adults, so I'm gonna assume that we can try to, you know, do it ad hoc, okay? Do it at will. And then hopefully we can cycle through a second round of questions, okay? So...
And then we've got a total of about an hour and 15 minutes, is that right?
As long as you...
No, no, I mean, what's...
We had to leave at 4:00.
Okay, so what time is it now?
It's 4:00.
Okay, so we've got about an hour.
Okay.
Does that match?
Yes.
Good, great, thank you. Josh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hi. So it's already Christmas break and y'all are still here. What's that? Get outta here, Maria. Look, we already decided we're gonna be here an hour. How, how fast can you do an hour? In about 60 minutes? I'm delighted to be here. I'll tell ya, I've been to Burtoner a couple times and we've done town hall meetings here. And we have a lot of people show up and there are a lot of questions. So I know that your parents are pretty active with each of you. And that's really very good. But I also know that you've got great teachers that help engage you in thinking. I was born in Waco, Texas. I'll tell you when there's stuff that you gotta write down for sure, 'cause she'll ask me on the test. Hey guys, how you doing?
Too good, good.
You're here in the right place. You go, "Hi." And then she goes all the way to the back. Is that the safest place back there? Here's a place right here. It's in Stradach, students always sits on the front row. I grew up in Waco, Texas, and I got a dad and a mom. And the reason why I'm saying this, 'cause some of it's pretty interesting. I got a dad and a mom, and an older brother and a little brother, and a little sister. And I grew up and at age about six and a half or seven, I started on the paper route. They're on paper routes anymore, and I know that. But I had a paper route that I threw every day. We'd get up and go do that, and my brothers had to do the same. I'm an Eagle Scout, so I went through Boy Scouts and I played a little bit of basketball. And then, when I was 14 years old, we moved from Waco, Texas to Washington DC. And my dad joined the Department of Justice. And a big change to move even from Dallas to Washington is a big change. But move from Waco, Texas to Washington was a big change. And then we, I, we lived there two years and then we moved to San Antonio. And I graduated from high school in San Antonio. And a year later, my dad became a federal judge. And my parents actually moved to El Paso. And my dad was a federal judge for 14 years. And had some of the biggest drug cases and criminal cases in the history of our country. And had a great big case where a judge was shot in the back and killed. And way, a long time ago, 1979. And as a result of that, President Reagan selected him to be the FBI director. So I actually grew up around a very famous dad who did really cool and amazing things. And he was the FBI director for President Reagan and President Bush for eight years. So I've gotten to see a whole bunch of things as a young man. And I graduated from college. I went to Southwestern University in Georgetown, Texas. Anybody heard of that? Anybody here senior? All of us? Anybody live in Southwestern? It's a very serious school. If you're looking, good. If you're looking, you wanna look further, let me know. I sit on the board of trustees. And we're looking for serious students. It's a lot, lot like Austin College. And so you gotta really be willing to go and hustle. Anyway, graduated from Southwestern University. I went to work, I've worked during the summers for, I driven a truck for AT&amp;T. I was an installer repairman. So I went to work for Southwestern Bell for 16 years. Ended up in Bell Labs, the old Bell Labs in New Jersey. Y'all have never heard of it, but it used to be the preeminent research and development think tank and working group in the world. And in 1989, I moved to Dallas. Ended my 16 beautiful years in 1993 with the company, and I ran for Congress. I lost. People that knew me thought I was just a really nice guy, non-political. I think I still am a nice guy, but a little bit more aged now. I've spent 17 years in Congress. I've served on the science committee, the banking committee, and the government reform and oversight committee for the first two years. After that, I was appointed to the Rules Committee. And I've been on the Rules Committee now 15 years. Five years ago, I became elected leadership for my party. Became chairman of the National Republican Congressional Committee. And I'm the guy that went and defeated Nancy Pelosi. I'm a Republican. That's what this is about. You want your team to win, and so I went and won. And we've held the two largest majorities since then with me as chairman of the committee. In January, I became chairman of the House Rules Committee. It's the oldest standing committee in Congress. All legislation before it goes to floor, goes there. So I see any piece, any and every piece of legislation goes before. Probably the only hearing you see is at our committee. And we're very busy. I am a conservative Republican. I believe in economic growth and vitality. I believe in jobs. I believe in job creation. I believe in investment. And so part of what you'll hear me say, hi.
Hi.
Part of what you'll hear me today is to think, to hear what you have to say and work with you. But that way you get a little bit, know a little bit more about me. Did everybody already know everything I already said, pretty much? You were prepared for me, weren't you? Good, alright, it took five minutes. What do y'all wanna talk about? 'Cause I could talk all day. Who's got the first question? Nobody?
Volunteer or pick them?
Sir, how are you?
Very good, sir.
Thanks for being here. What is this class called?
AP Government.
AP. Let me tell you what, AP means something. And it means something to colleges and it means something to trustees of universities. It means something to people who are professionals. I'm delighted that you've taken time to be a part of an AP class. That means we get into things in more detail than other classes. I'm delighted. Yes, sir?
Well, okay, our group is over the top of the table. I have a question. Are you aware that the Department of Homeland Security purchased 2 trillion rounds of hollow point ammunition? And this is enough ammo to weigh the war, similar scale to that, we're at on American soil for 20 years. I'm just wondering, at best this means that this is a national drug spending that's unimpolled? Or it could be that they're getting ready for something that we're on the ground? I'm just wondering whether there would be an investigation into his purchases and how you will go on legislation that allocates funds to the Department of Homeland Security?
Good question. Everybody hear the question? The answer is that yes, Congress is aware that the Department of Homeland Security purchased, put in an order or a requisition of what would be a five years' worth of ammunition. They actually did not buy in one year all that ammunition. Nor were they delivered all that ammunition. The Department of Homeland Security, by and large, purchases in bulk products for the government because they run the law enforcement training center.
Question on that. He said for training. Hollow point ammunition is not used for training. I'm a veteran and I've shot down, give you for a...
Okay, it is not all hollow point. It is purchasing because some were AK-47s, some were, I've got under two. And I appreciate that. What I'm trying to say is they purchased ammunition. So it was not all hollow point ammunition. So what I wanna say to you is, good question, but let's not go down the viewpoint yet that is all bad. It's a lot. You'd also note that at the same time, they bought all these body bags. They bought all these other heavy-duty vehicles that they requisitioned from the military. And it caused, still does cause, has caused a lot of people to say, "What's going on?" What I wanna say to you is, is that there are tens of thousands of law enforcement officers who come and get their training and their certification. And I am not an apologist for the Department of Homeland Security. As a matter of fact, I'm not happy with them most of the time. But for the purposes that they're trying to do here is, they tried to put in a long-term big order and it looked like, because of the way they hide things, that they were buying them all for one year. They want fresh ammunition. You cannot deliver all those rounds of bullets anyway in one year. The manufacturers could not do that. And what happened as a result of this information?
I can't find bullets, I don't have a list.
You cannot find bullets. Why?
They're dry off.
Because then 15 million Americans who, like I, go and shoot, said, "Oh my gosh, what's going on?" And there was a run on the store like there are run on banks. And all the ammunition went out. What secondly happened? The price escalated dramatically. We, I'm a conservative, believe that they did what they did to cause this to happen. They caused a panic when there was no need for a panic. Since then, we've held hearings. Michael McCall, who is from Austin, Texas, this may be one of the questions that you see on a test. Who are committee chairmen from Texas? There's five of them. Chairman Michael McCall from Austin, Texas is chairman of the Homeland Security Committee. And he held a big hearing where they brought lots of people in and we got to the bottom of it. So by and large, if you wanna go to the Homeland Security website, it's on there. But we've now resolved this, that when you look at it, it makes sense, but unless you ask questions, it didn't. Fair game? Good. If you've got any follow-up, feel free to let me know. Next question. Yes, sir. How you doing?
Good.
Good man.
If gun restrictions now are being talked of as solving gun violence, how can Chicago, Illinois have the strictest gun laws in the country while simultaneously having the worst gun violence in the country? How could that be if gun restriction is supposed to help while gun restriction there doesn't seem to do any, any at all?
Everybody hear the question? The answer is, in my opinion, once again, I'm a conservative Republican, where you find the strictest of gun control, you've got the most gun violence. Washington DC, Exhibit B. Chicago, Illinois, deaths would be Exhibit A. The bottom line is, is that instead of guns, you have to think about people. And criminals prefer who? Unarmed victims. Criminals prefer to know that they can come and take advantage or rob you and that you can't do anything about it. Criminals break the law. Criminals don't care whether you, they don't want you to have a gun, but they'll have one. So the first position you have to get from is that the Constitution of the United States, now, I cannot say that every one of you are 18. There are restrictions by states on the age that you must be to own a weapon. But once you get past that, then there's a background check and then there's licensing that takes place. And in a whole bunch of states, wherever there is what's called conceal and carry or handgun carry, 'cause some states, it's against the law to conceal it. In Texas, you conceal it, but you cannot show people your weapon. Y'all see the difference? In both of those circumstances, it is, there is less gun violence than where there is gun control. So what I would say is, it has very little to do with guns and it has a whole lot to do with criminals. Criminals who can take advantage of you, who can break into your house. And by the way, in other states across, in other countries, like across Europe, they have openly banned guns, but they also ban certain types of knives. That's because people get killed with knives and baseball bats and other things. So criminals are the problem, not guns. I happen to believe that the right to keep and bear arms is a constitutionally protected part of what we as United States citizens should have. And that I think that if everybody knew that there was a police officer in a room or a bus or somewhere, wouldn't you feel safer? I do. We trust police officers. Well, I also trust myself. So I have a concealed and carry license and I take bullet bans of it. I don't need to go shoot my mouth off. I don't drink. I don't do odd behavior. I'm a reliable person. But if I'm in a place where I'm threatened, somebody comes after me, I stand at least some chance to protect myself. That lessens the criminals, 'cause criminals are thugs and they're chicken. They pick on you because they can. If you fight back, they figure that out. Follow-up?
Then where are they coming from when they always, everyone always speaks of, "We should take away all these guns because somehow that's gonna stop the criminals" that obviously, if they're going to kill someone, they're not gonna follow these gun laws. How could they think they could enforce something like that?
It is, it is not logic, it is politics, sir. And people use this as political rhetoric. And they try and make people who understand the truth look funny. Thank God we live in Texas. You're next? Good, hi!
Hi. With all due respect, we, the young people, are expected to not only participate in society building, but we are also expected to sacrifice our time, energy, and creativity to support a political and economic system that has zero interest in supporting young people. We face a terrible job market, sky-high tuition debts, loans that will never be discharged back from safe, higher healthcare costs, a broken social security system, and an ever-increasing big weather surveillance, police state. No matter who we vote for in Congress, the only constant is an increase in government spending and higher debt loads that we, the youth, will be expected to repay with ever-deprecating currency. Mr. Sessions, it is obvious, especially with the new budget talk, that neither Republicans nor Democrats are actually caring about eliminating a debt in a timely manner. Keeping an exact quote in mind, which is, no problem can be solved from the same level of consciousness that created it, would it be wise for young people to simply cast a vote of no confidence in the system and buy tangible assets that cannot be equated that will be solved?
Everybody hear the question? The facts of the case are real simple. By a margin of two to one, young people supported Barack Obama. And these exact same problems that you talk about are all related to the current administration. Debt limit, I mean, debt, the, the amount of debt in this country has doubled in five years under Barack Obama. What took 243 years to do, Barack Obama did in five years. Why is that? It is because of the policies. All this is policy. And the White House has a policy that has resulted in killing jobs. They can do that. They've done that in healthcare. They've done that in energy. They've done that in banking. They've done that in spending. Now, what I wanna do is see if I could get you to come up on the board and show me what you're talking about. Can you do that? I'm trying to help. I'm not trying to call your bluff. If not, just tell me and I'll do something.
Currently, the debt ceiling has, um, there was a crisis earlier this year, which, um, the government shutdown occurred. And usually, if you look on the US debt clock, each person owes about, like, 50,000, 50,000, 50,000, including infants and those without jobs. And currently it's on the rise. So since our money system is based on a debt, where our debt is the key to money, there's no way to solve this.
You're exactly right, but you're wrong to say there's nothing we can do.
Saying that it's not backed by, or there is, but it's not as high or...
Okay, you're doing great. You're on the right path and you've got it. But why would somebody say, "Vote for no confidence"? If you had a problem, you solved the problem, not throw what's called the baby in the bat, in the, in the bath water. You would solve what? The problem. What is the problem? The problem is that the things which you need, I need, somebody's opposed to. Somebody sees it differently. So why don't you solve the problem and stay involved? Okay? Right? Voting, what does voting for no confidence, what does that do? Nothing. So what is the first problem that we have? Spending. Is that right? Spending. The first month the president was in office, what did he do? $780 billion. The first month, new spending. Here's where we are. Added $780 billion. What was the next thing they did that was big? Healthcare. $2 trillion worth of brand-new spending and taxes. And they sold these premises off faulty ideas. And you're learning about them today. So, watch this. I'm gonna introduce you to politics now. Congress. What is this called? What does CR? Anybody? Anybody? We're using it every day. You hear it every day. CR. Continuing resolution. CR. So here's what happened. Barack Obama was elected here and took over here, January of '09. Remember that? In here, Republicans won in two years. And they took over right there in January. What Republicans and Democrats and the president were unable to do is come to a resolution. We couldn't get each other to agree. The House and the Senate did not agree on a budget or on spending. So there was what's called a continuing resolution. And what those darn pesky Republicans said is, "No new money." No new money. We're already spending enough. So what happens is, then we went and applied in 2011 for 2012 because we worked, we worked forward. So for half of 2012, we kept it what's called flat. So there was a partial increase. Since 2012, we've had the 2013 and the 2014 budgets. And they are flat because of the CR. They can't make us do what we don't wanna do. What, yes, family?
So if, like, you're not gonna agree to do what they wanna do and they're not gonna be able to make you do what you wanna do, how is anything supposed to get done?
Well, you stick to where you originally were. We're still spending $2 trillion.
Well, I mean, like, if, if we're just, everyone's sticking to their own side, I mean, that caused the government to shut down.
Well, hold on. That, that in fact didn't, because we agreed. It did not shut down the government. We just said, "Okay, we disagreed, so we're gonna stay where we were." That did not shut down the government. What shut down the government? Other term. What's debt limit? How much debt we can then take on?
However, originally, I asked you the question, that is, because, how, how our money works is that we are basically contributing our debt to money and because we couldn't raise the debt ceiling, then we couldn't have currency.
But we did raise the debt ceiling and we've done it every time.
But that is a continued issue and...
It is.
...that, that means our currency is depreciating and that means eventually, I mean, depreciating, but eventually, since it's not backed by anything, our currency will go...
Ah, but that's why we quit doing it.
But we can't...
But that's why, we can do it. Once again, you're thinking, "You can't," but we, what's the word? I have a Down Syndrome son who's 19. Alex is a cool guy. But one word he learns, if you say, "Alex, what's the word," is "can." You can. You just have to choose how you're gonna do it. Yes, family?
Then why are we not?
Well, we are. And this is what I'm trying to prove to you.
You just said that anyone sticking to their own side, and if that occurs, then it's not going to work. You know, we just keep trying to address this.
Well, hold on, hold on. If the problem is increasing it, or is the problem decreasing it? It's increasing. So I just showed you, we quit, we quit increasing it. I just told you, can. Can is, can started happening right there. Why is that bad? It's not like we went to zero. We didn't go to zero. We were, where we were, $2,600 billion. We were, where we, we were stuck. We're not gonna add anymore. Well, we didn't take any away. Well, you didn't better your circumstance. We made sure we did not make it worse. And you can engage in this too, baby, sweetheart. It's okay. So here's the next term then, debt limit. And what's the next term? Sequestration. What's sequestration? What's sequestration? Sequestration is the president's answer to how we deal with a debt limit agreement. So there are three terms here which are all gonna be on your test. Please tell me what CR is. Continuing resolution. Here's, here's the answer. Continuing resolution is when neither the Senate nor the House are able to agree upon a new spending or budget agreement, then it refers to continuing where you were. Second, debt limit. Debt limit answer is, it is the ability through constitutional agreement, House and Senate and the president, to accept or take on more debt. And lastly, sequestration is, the answer is, the president's agreement suggestion for how to deal with the debt limit compromise back in 20. So, here's the answer. You ready? That's the spending curve for the President. This was the spending curve for Republicans. What's called the Budget Control Act of twenty eleven. And then, 'cause this is what we passed. The delta here is about three hundred billion here. And so, it climbs at half the right to where we balance the budget. 'Cause there's money that comes in, we balance the budget in ten years. This never, but, in, in ninety-nine years, it never balances, the Democrats, never. Ours balanced in ten years. And then, the President added sequestration. Never thought it would be agreed to. And it does this with the budget balancing in ten years. This is where we are. So, instead of that, where it goes out of sight, you never do it, we can balance the budget in ten years. Republicans said we can balance in ten years. So, the budget, here's the next slide of what's gonna be on your test. There are two sides to the budget. This is budget. Over here is mandatory. And here is discretionary. Discretionary means running the government. The Pentagon, the Department of Justice, Homeland Security. This mandatory is Social Security, Medicare. What's Medicare? Retired senior citizens' healthcare. What's Medicaid? Poor people, people who need help in paying their healthcare. This, right now, is about sixty percent of the budget, and this is about forty percent of the budget. So, over here, I'm gonna talk about discretionary spending. Discretionary is stuff that we can have or not have. This is mandatory. Until we change the policy, you gotta stick to it. In twenty fifteen, in January of twenty fifteen, the discretionary spending will equal two thousand and eight. Is that progress? You're, you want progress. If I told you, we're gonna spend the same amount for discretionary in twenty fifteen that we did in two thousand and eight, how's that? And you just told me, gotta vote like, we don't have confidence. That's confidence. I just took it back. By law, guaranteed unless we agreed to change it. So that we quit spending enough so that we balance the budget in ten years. The Democrats would not do it in, in a hundred years. And we're gonna do it in ten. In law, we're doing it right now. Yes, ma'am? Do you wanna? No, this is the truth, right there, wrong take, right there. That's what we're doing. Gonna get it done. Because it's immoral for us to put it all off on your shoulders. Why should we spend all our money today? Yes, ma'am?
Um, you bring up a really good point about.
I know, a really good point. But she asked the question.
No, exactly, and it has, this has to do with her question. Um, Zira has recently posted an article about, it's called, "This is what generational debt looks like." And, uh, there's some information that shows that people, citizens who are turning sixty-five in twenty thirteen have, um, received about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in government benefits over the years, which means that our future unborn children will be responsible for the debt of this, it being, coming out to four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in, in change. And that just seems patently unfair. It seems to go.
It is very unfair.
The government is the spender of last resort, and the Federal Reserve is the lender of last resort. And these two Ponzi schemes seem to be working together, um, in order to, I don't know, it seems like, um, almost borderline enslaved the youth in debt that can never be repaid.
Well, but, hold on, what's the word?
It's actually can.
Come on, Alex knows it, what's the word?
Can.
Can, it can. It just, you just have to put the right people there to do it.
But that's, that's a really good point, because, uh, recently, the, uh, budget that apparently only cuts twenty billion dollars, um, the deficit reduction over the next ten years, is like basically a rounding error when we're talking about three trillion dollar, trillion dollar.
Well, it is, it is. But we only started, that was the negotiation, that was for this amount of money. That's all we did. It wasn't a big budget deal. It was from what the Democrats' lowest number to the Republicans' biggest number. And that's all it was. It was never intended to be a big deal, but it saved twenty-three billion.
Well, it may have saved twenty-three billion, which, over ten years, seems like perhaps that's just.
Now, let's, let's, let's assume you're completely correct. Because you are. But what's the word? Can. So, how about if I told you? How about if I told you among, so, did y'all get this point? Y'all got this, I answered your question, people can make a difference. How about if I told you this? That there are twenty-five million people unemployed and underemployed for, under Barack Obama because of his policies, and that there are an equal number of people working today to what here? The President's plan, Nancy Pelosi's plan, Harry Weems' plans, the Democrats' plan, and I can prove it to you going back to the first month he was President, they said, "We, jobs are gone." And it's because of their policies. Once again, with the word can, their policies are all about unemployment. Twenty-five million people. And they did it through their policies. If we were interested in employing more people, they could do it overnight. For four years, our companies, our biggest employers have said, "We have money, we want employed people." They wanna put rules and regulations, they wanna tell everybody how to do things. That's the problem. Who you have running the railroad is the problem. I can prove it. Right there, exhibit A, B, C, D, right there. Yes, sir?
Dianne Feinstein is trying to take away our freedom of speech by defining who can be a journalist. Do you believe that this is a threat to our freedom, and why?
Absolutely.
Why?
Well, Dianne Feinstein wants to make sure only certain people get a chance to write. So, were you the gun guy? Where's the gun guy? There's the gun guy. There's something called a constitution. What do they want to do with guns? They wanna put a. They wanna put a waiting period on it. They wanna put, they wanna tell you who can be official and write. This is what happens in, in communist countries a lot. They do not like it that people are saying Barack Obama and Nancy Pelosi and these people are ruining the country. Sorry, I can stand up and say that. Now, the crowd I do it in, you have to ask the question first, and then I can prove it. I'm not out, I'm not a hater. I'm just a, look, you ask the question, I'll tell you. We're trying to balance the budget in ten years. Nine more, we're gonna make it. Because it's immoral. So, yes, I, I agree. I agree with that, with the things that are said about Dianne in that regard.
When is it ever acceptable for the First Amendment to be restricted?
Well, in fact, there are some circumstances.
And what are they?
And, uh, one of the examples that we had, uh, I handled on the floor, uh, probably five or six years ago. Uh, top-secret things. Things that really are national secrets. Now, one of the earliest national secrets was, uh, I don't know if y'all study history, but there used to be big navies that would be all around the world. And when people are in boats and away from fresh fruit, what do people get? Scurvy. It was a national secret, the British figured it out. What was it? Limes. That's why they're called limeys. They had all their people sucking limes, eating limes. And they didn't get scurvy, they didn't get sick. And somebody figured that out. And what they then say? That's a national secret. In seventeen fifty-five or so. Don't tell anybody. They didn't have an internet. They didn't have all these things where everything, all sudden overnight, everything is known. I'll get right to you next. Remind me if I go to one of these gals, your next. So, what happened is, is that there were some very interesting things that were going on. This is just one example, of a guy named Bin Laden. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of him. He's dead now. Died about May ninth, two years ago. 'Cause we killed him. He is the mastermind behind two thousand and one, what's called nine eleven. And he masterminded for five years to send people into this country to, to kill Americans, innocent people. Well, we understood that Bin Laden, you know all the stuff that's going on now about the NSA and hearing phone calls? This was pretty new. Eight or nine years ago, that we actually could put a drone up and do what? Listen in. Listen. And we put drones up all over the place, over what country? Among others. Pakistan. And we picked up regular conversations with Bin Laden and others. And we would put a drone up, and they would know what coverage it was, so they would know about what area he lived in. Where he was calling from. This is important, if you're trying to find somebody, if you can wire him down within a five or six mile area, that's good? Okay, we thought it was good. The media wanted to print that. They wanted to come out and say, "Hey, everybody." So, what did Bin Laden quit doing? Couldn't use the damn cellphone, darn cellphone. Uh, we said adults. Quit using the darn cellphone. It was printed places, and then after that, a senator came out and said it more loudly. "Well, the media already said that he's on cellphone." So, what was it said then, everybody then knew? That night, Bin Laden was off his boat. Yeah, are there reasons why you should not print things? Are there reasons why you should not do it? Yeah. Should it be against the law? Secrets should be secrets. The problem was not that they printed it, what's the problem? It's somebody who knew talked. That's the problem. Is Snowden a hero or a villain?
Hero.
Maybe.
So, on the same.
He's holding us hostage, that's what it turns. Yes, sir?
On the same topic, there is a group of highly respected architects and engineers called Architects and Engineers for nine eleven Truth, and they have put their careers on the lines to attest to the fact that the Twin Towers should not have fallen due to the sole airplane crash that happened. Additional footage from the ground shows explosions near the base of the building.
Really?
Do you think that the government has withheld important information regarding nine eleven because it does not agree with the official narrative given in two thousand and one?
Do you think that Oswald was the only person to shoot Jack Kennedy, our President? I don't know. You know, if, if they go down there and recreate it, it's really hard for a guy with that rifle to pop, 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 pop. When my dad was the FBI director, the number one question was, "Who really killed Kennedy?" I don't know. I don't know. I was in Washington, I wasn't close. But let me tell you what. That plane did come and land at the Pentagon, and that was a bunch of evil people. And I will tell you that the guys that, that took down the plane over Pennsylvania were heroes. And I will tell you that those guys were thugs and intentionally came after us. And we were innocent people who never thought this would happen. Sir?
Understatement. Throughout the last several administrations, the major political parties cannot agree upon the budget that will lower the death ceiling and stop a front international crisis responding upon our allies and unfortunate wars that we cannot pay back. In addition.
It's not just war, but you're right.
In addition, our constitutional rights have been violated. In recent years, independent members have grown in popularity by their, by have their ideals that believes on how to fix our nation, shown by the rigid two-party system. With due respect, should the political, should the people continue to vote for the two parties, two political parties that solve none of our domestic unfortunate issues? Or would it be wiser to vote for third party or independent parties that not only follow more interest, but also the consent of the people?
Are you willing? Do you know what you stand for? Everybody in here, just yourself. Just think about this. Do you know what you stand for? Kind of? Join the crowd. What a lot of people look at is people who stand up and say things, but over here, something else is going on. We've had politicians and Presidents, members of Congress, who say one thing and do another. "I'm for..." But when it really gets down to it, they're not. What I would tell you is this, in fairness to both sides, is that there's a lot of mismatch of what they say. For instance, there's a whole lot of people, I can prove this to you, you can go look it up, National Association of Manufacturers, NAM, known as NAM. They have a political agenda. They wanna lower taxes. They want to have a huge trade policy where they can open up other countries and sell things. They're opposed to Obamacare, whole bunch of things. Democrats are oh-for-ten in voting for that agenda. Oh-for-ten. And Republicans, by and large, are eight out of ten. But Democrats stand up and talk about manufacturing jobs all the time. Why? 'Cause a lot of them are union jobs. How can you say one thing, but when it comes down to it, to make it stronger, you vote against it? An educated voter needs to know what they're after. I guarantee you, go get anybody else and you bring them in, whether it's left or right, and what their agenda is, is what? That is not an agenda. Solving the problem. So, case in point, this young woman here said, "Debt and spending is a problem, we need to do something about it." I didn't prove it to you, but the facts of the case are, we're gonna balance the budget in ten years. When was the last time the balance, the budget was balanced? Who did it? Who didn't wanna do it? Yes, ma'am? Oh, Republicans. We balanced the budget in nineteen ninety-seven. President Clinton said, "No, no, 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 no." We cut taxes, we balanced the budget. Ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and one, we balanced the budget. Because we cut taxes and all these people went to work. You're gonna get what you're hanging at. So, rather than thinking, "We just are for anybody but them," why don't you figure out what you're for? Figure out what you're for, and I guarantee you, one of the two parties is for it. Figure out what you're for, and I guarantee you, one of the two parties is for it. One of the two parties is for what you're for. So why go create something else? Here's how close we are. This is where the Democrats are, and this is where the Republicans are. You get all of one or all the other. So, here's... Not gonna be on your test, but this is what the Republicans are for.
Mr. Sessions?
Yes?
You became one and the other, and one the other side. Can you have something in the middle?
You ever seen a dog that was created by a committee? God is good at it. You make them all one way or the other. Here's the key. GDP. What's GDP? Republicans are for a 6% GDP growth. What are Democrats for? Less than 1%. Here's your answer. That's the two sides. Are you for four? Heck, yes, I'm for four. Would you be for two as opposed to one? Yes, I am. But we struggle. Start and back. Speak up, please.
You claim that you support free market, and yet...
I do.
There has been no attempt to shut down a large monopoly that affects all our lives. In addition to the Constitution states that the coinning of money belongs to the Congress. In addition, the decrease in purchasing power incurred by holders of money due to inflation in parts gains to the issuers of money. This was a direct quote from the Federal Reserve, 1975. Therefore, if above is true, then why has the government not responded about the legality of the Federal Reserve by shutting it down?
Did the Federal Reserve shut down?
No. Why hasn't the government tried to shut it down?
Oh, well, you know, there are a lot of arguments about the Federal Reserve. And the Federal Reserve, I don't want to be a strong advocate for. But I can tell you, you gotta have somebody that is there to coin money. You have to have someone there who can protect it and decide what its role would be. For instance, President Obama. His plan... You ever heard of QE2? QE2? Okay. The president is in a big pickle. Not only is he only at about 39% of people who support him, he's in a big pickle because of this government spending, the Federal Reserve. The Federal Reserve has the responsibility for essentially our economy. Now, they don't run it. They help look at it and tweak it and do these things. The Fed sets interest rates. Did you know this? Interest rates. Interest rates determine what? Among other things. The cost of money. The cost of money. Why is the cost of money important? Because the interest rates determine how essentially you buy a car, you buy a house, how you're able to pay things back. President Obama said, "We want to have high-interest rates or low-interest rates?" Here's the answer. Near zero. So the cost of money was near zero. That meant that people could come, if they could get the money, they paid little interest rates. You're going, "Okay, okay, we get this." Do you get this? Okay, you get that. At the same time, he had outlandish spending. And debt went from nine to what is it currently at? Ma'am? You're the one that want to talk about it. You know what it is, then say it. Hey, please. What is it? Seventeen trillion. It went from nine to seventeen trillion in four years. Actually, five, but depends how you look at it. Five years. And we have to pay what for that? Interest. And so the president, because he didn't want to go out of sight, moved interest rates down to nothing to where the government is now borrowing at overly historical rates. Low. Near zero. Normally, it's about 3.5%. So, watch this. So because we have interest rates the way they are, it means that we're paying current... We're taking out current money. Because we have to, because we're spending more than what we've got, you've got one of two things you can do. Print money or what? the money, right? We need money. The only person who can print the money is the Fed. So President Obama says, "We need to go to the marketplace and we need to borrow money." Who do we borrow money from? China, people in America, all these people. What are they called? What is it that we borrow and what do we pay back? They're called government bonds. And that's an agreement that I'll pay you back. I'll pay you back. But here's what he then also did. He then said, "But I only want to pay you less than 1%." So what do they say then? "No, thank you. I'll go put it somewhere else." So all of a sudden, we could not have the money. So here's where the Fed... Where did my man go? Who asked? There he is. So all of a sudden, the Fed goes, "Holy smoke! We have never had problems borrowing money. We now got problems." So what do they do? Go to, number one. Start printing more money. So they are out throwing all this money into the economy. And when you take what should be this big and you make it that big, you devalue. You devalue. It's like having one Corvette out there is really cool. You get 500, what is it? Not so cool. So what did the Fed just do yesterday? Just yesterday? The Fed said, "We are going to quit borrowing from ourselves, printing money, and I owe you to ourselves." Because it's a lie! Because you can print the money, you act like, "Well, I just came up with this new money. Look at that." But we printed it, and there's nothing to stand behind it. So what happened is just yesterday, the Fed said, "Ah, we want to quit doing that." So what's expected now? Watch this. What's expected now is, this thing's gonna go from one to three or four. What happens when you were paying 500 billion times four? All of a sudden, it blows your model out of water. And that's why people are talking about, what's the term that goes with this? Inflation. Now, we've got a new worry. So here's the bottom line. What time is it? So here's the bottom line. I hope I did well enough to get invited back.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I'm giving you a real-life economics class because we're gonna blame it on you. You're the one that asked the question. Guys and gals, young students, there's no free lunch. Quit thinking there is. Quit thinking it's okay. It's okay just to go do that. It's okay just to justify it. The policy behind it is gonna kill your job opportunities. Kill them. And you're the one that's gonna have to pay the bill. Why? Why would you not want to understand economics? Why would you want to trade out what's there when what you're after is what you're after? And what you should be after is a brighter future with a job where you stand a chance to go work your little tail off and do well here and get to get out and do like I did, to be at Bell Labs when you're 30 years old. Go have a great job. Be able to go have your own apartment and have your own kids and a house, a wife, and a... Or whatever, or not at all, but to be able to take care of yourself. Instead of living off your parents and watching your parents go, "Can you please go get a job?" I'm sorry, there's not one. That's because of policies. I love y'all. Y'all look great. I hope I did well enough to get invited back, even if you disagree with me. You need to know, everything I told you today is the truth.
I think they want one more question.
Oh, one more question.
Guys, I'm gonna, since there's still groups have to go, I'm gonna do a vote on the topic that you guys want to hear. So what groups are left to have to speak?
Ah, one that'll only take 30 seconds.
Okay, alright. So, looks like marijuana legalization or war issues. Or, that's related to those other things, okay? Let's do war marijuana, okay? Raise your hand if you want to talk about war.
You give me a 30-second question, I'll give you a 30-second answer. Go!
Alright. Few global researchers noted in numerous international studies that men consistently favor military intervention over women by about 15%. One lengthy theory, accounting for the difference in gender inequity, argues that rather than women being opposed to war, feminists, which can include men, tend to be against military conflicts, as they are usually caught in men's interests, and the cost of war falls heavily on civilian women and children.
Good God!
Your constituency, especially those who are female, are deeply concerned with your highly interventionist core of policy. Given the new data concerning the public's non-interventionist beliefs, will you vote no on all legislation that continues to expand the US military's power abroad?
We're aware you really must be going, so could you please sit next to us, ma'am?
I'll answer you right now. And I did not make this up. I can quote probably the last people that have said this, but there are people who believe that someday there will be peace. And I want to be one of them. There are people who believe the lion and the lamb will lie down with each other. When that happens, I want America to be the lion and not the lamb.
Understandable.
So I will always vote to protect our military, always. Because I have a duty and an obligation to protect innocent people. And there are vicious savages out there. And they're here, they're foreign and domestic.
What about the innocent people in the Afghan countries where we are currently fighting? The women and children are victims of war as much as we are.
You know, not as much as we are. They're in the war zone. And they are very vulnerable. They are very vulnerable. And yet, if you read any number of books, you will know that the savages that force them to do what they do hide behind them. They are chicken. And I am sorry, and I hate that. I continue to support and will support the United States military. Next question.
That's it. That's all we have time for.
No, there's one more. Sir?
Mr. Sessions. Our prison population is exploding with non-violent drug offenders, many of them minorities. Given the racist roots that led to the outlawing of cannabis, marijuana, and criminal... The criminalization seems akin to ending poll taxes and literary taxes in the South. Will you support ending laws that have beliefs and racist beliefs?
Of course, I'm for things that are not racist. But marijuana is not a racist issue.
Oh, in the time of... In 1850, there were 8,210 plantations. This was around when prohibition started.
Okay. I answered your question real fast. I'm absolutely opposed to marijuana. I've never even touched a marijuana cigarette. I will do everything I can do to stop it. I have been around it for 45 years. I've seen people that smoke dope that end up doing silly things. The guys that smoke the most dope become the most screwed up and have the worst lives. They're the guys that you see sitting out under the bridges right now, and they don't care. They have completely lost it. If you want to be a loser in life, go ahead and do all the marijuana you want. If you want to stand up and be able to have a job and know what you're doing every day, by the way, I don't drink either. If you wanted to ruin your life, go get drunk. Go do something stupid like drive a car. No, I'm not for marijuana. I'm not for people getting drunk. I'm not for alcohol. I'm not a... It's not like I don't understand it. But no, I'm absolutely opposed to marijuana in all forms. So, there you go, Chancellor. God bless y'all.
Alright, thank you very much.
By the way, do they know? Do they know? Yeah, you want to tell them?
Well, Mr. Sessions was kind enough to give me a nomination to the US Naval Academy, and so...
Do you believe the guy out on the front lawn should be smoking dope?
No.
Thank you.